First two are coming in the same day?
First three hours and the second three. It just started with the first, the name was the same as the first paragraph, so I like that one. Oh, same. That, that'll line.
Go. That's ready to go. You have your script.
Yeah.
Oh, this is the one, it's only the different deals. It's a different meeting. The only deals?
Yeah. That's the second meeting.
How will we open for the next person?
I mean, you put the work in on the minutes.
I should have. Put the three hours out of night of writing them. And then hours of time.
I didn't realize you were gonna take minutes on me.
What did you do?
I wasn't in public, I mean, I wasn't.
It was a form of, you know.
Right. Just figured it'd be nice if you guys had to represent, so that's why they're done today.
If I'd have known that, I wouldn't think it's.
She was being nice to you guys.
Yeah, but I know that, I would have looked more directly at her than I would.
We can compare and see if I lost that somewhere.
Yeah.
And the, the second one didn't well out though. I think I compared the first one and you kind of glanced over the second one, but earlier than this, I also said one's probably not too bad as well.
I want to point out that on page 107, we're very rare for using F's on.
Too bad. We'll put social letters. I have 21 pages of written minutes. Come on, what about meetings in the morning? I locked the door after, sorry.
I heard you, I was a little bit too late.
Okay.
Thank you though.
Yeah. Here's your bracket for next, the 13th.
The 13th.
Yeah. There are one, two, three, anything else?
Minutes there.
Yeah.
Let me back. Minutes there. I'm gonna see what your official comments is.
And I jumped on mine.
I'm gonna turn six on you.
So, the session for the same thing, um, because you know I was on at the, uh, October 9th meeting? So I'm assuming the supply and need is to do the normal, uh, six to eight, uh, this evening? And then very long with the discussion for any future discussions that, um, agreeable or? So you're saying the agenda is open? Yeah, yes, so you're the ones who start, um? Well, I'll start, or?
Yeah.
Well, after our big, uh, meeting with all the people? I think we should just call this whole, uh, what we've got, what we've got to here and a half? A dumpster fire. And then Mark Pruitt's throwing us under the bus at the last meeting that this is all on us. Then we had the people telling us that, well, you guys need serious help, you are warriors. I make a motion, then we send it back to, to them to, to refine that this, this group hasn't been able to.
I don't think that's a my idea. I disagree with that, so.
Right, that he's made, he's made comments in public meetings that he pro-solar and this is not pro-solar. This isn't pro. Oh, oh, Pruitt. Oh, right, the, there was a big, I, and I have to apologize, I didn't read what Nextera said to the council then. I just think they should, you look over what they brought to us. And I'm saying that we haven't been able to really get this done in all this time? Because it's so convoluted. And so I wanted to take it back and send it by. So I was making a motion, send it back to them, they're the elected officials, this needs more work than we can. Anybody wanna check with that motion? I'm glad.
Nice first question, you're good.
Well, geez, I know. I feel terrible that the, uh, well, I think, I don't know, I feel like I got beat up at our. Oh, people come on public moments and say, oh, yeah. We got beat up by both sides. Pro-solar people sit back.
You done?
Thank you, yeah, moving on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Myers, yes, yes, that's, that's a hacker.
Okay, so I just had to explain myself now, just.
That's part of, that's part of the job. That's part of the job of being in the kitchen, so it's.
Yeah.
Okay, so the, taken away from the public comments, there was things that I thought kept rising to the top, uh, which was, I kind of put it in a bucket of infrastructure. Would be the roads, fire, infrastructure needs to support facility. I think that there was some, um, I think that we, it would be wise to get some outside counsel on that, if there is availability. Maybe, I don't know if there is, but to support a, uh, a solar farm. You know, what, what type of infrastructures need water? Does water need to be nearby? All these things that, that maybe outside of just the, uh, the solar farm itself, that the county needs to consider. Like moving a solar farm. Because, yeah, unless somebody in the room has the answer to all those questions, I think that would be something to consider. The, uh, the other thing was the property values, and we talked a little bit about this the other night. I was, a long time ago, I was part of a project that was, uh, waste management had gone through the country, basically, built out all these methane plants for, in their, uh, their dumps that they down feed it. And so, and I was just involved with the electrical, but it's what they did is they went through before they even got the permit or anything, they went through. Like anybody within like three miles, they had a, went out and talked with them, had an agreement with them. The agreement itself, I think that they had like, you know, first right to buy, or they could buy their house, or in the meantime, if they stayed there, they would have, you know, free lectures. We can't dictate those terms, but I do think that it would, somewhere in these regulations, I would like to put in there that any resident or landowner within three miles should have some kind of sign off. What it takes to get that person to sign off on a project like that? That's not what the regulation would be, but as part of the application for permits, that every landowner within a certain distance that's gonna be affected into non-participating owners, that they would have to bring, you know, a sign off that says, we have everybody within the two or three mile radius has agreed to, uh, agreeing to the, to the project. So somewhere, I think that pushes the developer, whoever that is, to do their due diligence and talk to non-participating landlords. Whether they make a deal with them like they're making a deal with the participating landlords? That's up to them. But I would like to see that. I think that, I think that might take care of some of the land value issues that kept coming up. That's just my thought. The other big thing that was, that came up, we kept talking about the watershed, and I'm not, you guys are probably more, uh, knowledgeable about the watershed and how that all works. Now, we keep talking about a plant that's gonna go in a certain area, because there's a certain company that keeps coming in and talking about a certain area. We're building regulations for the whole county. We're not building regulations for one company or one project. So the watershed itself might be different, depending on where you're at in the capital.
I think the whole county is broken, the watershed districts are broken. I think we have three different watershed districts in Jackson County. I don't mind getting off on that. I think of these maps, I think there's three watersheds in the county. Watershed districts.
But, but yeah, points will take them, it's in, they're different areas of different.
And I don't know what, I don't know what you can, you know, I don't know what it does or doesn't do to be in the watershed, I'm not sure what those impacts are. But that would be something that we need to probably talk about more. Whether it's another third party, somebody to provide some input on that, if needed. And then, um, I was also thinking about, since this time, you know, I, there's, there's always been the issue for me with the setbacks, I think they're too, too high. But I think that if we had a comprehensive plan that said, you're gonna have everybody within three miles sign off on it. We bring the total from 2,000 down to 1,500, you know, and say we're gonna cap it at that. Then we talk about reducing the setbacks. That's what my vision would be, so that, that's, that's what I do. That's, so. I don't know, that's, I mean, I don't wanna make a little shiny thing, except just talking about it.
That's what I'm saying, we got a, we got a dog calling.
I think those, I mean, great ideas. I think this might only thought with the 2,000 acres. I don't know, you were here, you, Monday, um, we'll watch the video of the commissioner's meeting. Both commissioners that were present, both stated that they will not vote for anything more than 2,000 acres. So we have in there a little caveat that could go higher, and so basically we need to remove that. And put it, either lower it, or 2,000 acres total in Jackson County. One, one project, 2,000 acres total, and remove the other stuff that follows that. Because even if we sent it back that way, they're not gonna accept it.
Right, they can always change it when they get out of their desk.
Right.
That's why.
Well, they have to send it back to us.
Oh, they do?
Well. That, that's why I think we could, we, we reduce the setbacks and reduce the size. Or something that's more, uh, and, I mean, these guys keep going up and up and up, you know? We might hit it out, whatever. Whatever that looks like, and if they end up regulating that project. If you have 1,500 and then you had agreements where everybody within three miles, uh, that's, you know? That's gonna take care of a lot of the setback things right there, you know? I mean, if I'm a landowner and, and, uh, they wanna be within 400 foot of my residence, I gotta sign off on it. Well, they're gonna be negotiating with that landowner. So a lot of it, because you have to have a sign on for a person within seven miles. And so you give the landowners the, the ownership to, to make those decisions. And we follow the other counties when it comes to the setbacks amount, and then we reduce the overall size of the project.
Any one project, if then someone could come in and make another.
Another, we had one 1,500 acre project. And I'm, you know, I was kind of in favor, I was part of the driving force of moving it to the four mile. I wouldn't have a problem with going back to the original 1,000 feet. Even if we left it at 2,000 acres, but I mean, I don't, I also don't have a problem with dropping it to 1,500, and you make a valid point with that agreement. But that's gonna negate a lot of that, you know, if somebody wants to have a less setback, they're gonna get compensation for it.
Right, yeah.
Speaking of course, if that really keeps the, I'm definitely 2,000, not with the motion, you know, response is, is, obviously we're anticipating that we will send them some sort of document, and then they will have concern with different parts of it. I'd rather force them to, well, make those suggested edits.
When, when they talk about, you need to have so many acres to make it peaceful.
Yeah.
The difference, you know, the first, first, you know, it's, it's 2,000, it's five guys, unless it's still gonna be financially peaceful at 1,500.
We don't know.
Right. Did anybody see what Nextera gave the speech to the council, the last commission meeting? They were there to talk about this.
Right.
It was in the paper. I didn't. Was there anything significant said at that meeting?
Well, you know.
I feel like I wasn't there to hear what, what this was for.
Well, it was open, I mean, you could have been.
I didn't know that Nextera was gonna be there. In fact, some of these questions that Ethel bring up, we've never had them talk to us about whether going out and telling their customers.
Once again, we're writing these for the entire county. We just, we said from the very beginning, the first thing we talked about this, we're having write these with this project.
Looming over, right.
Well, we should have done this, you know, we should have these regulations not with, you know, not considering that. So trying to write these for a specific company is not good business to me.
No, but it's still, it's good business to know what you're talking about. And there's a lot of, I can't believe we couldn't get the sound right. I really was disappointed that our, apparently there are sound to decimal numbers are out of line. And that was brought up, and we went over that a couple of times. We're not talking, and I, and so I took it at the heart of some paper, not getting enough of people. The experts coming in and talking about the Nextera, when they, the deal, they were talking about the customers.
Well, we, we developed.
I'd like to know what they're telling customers, I'd like to hear their speech, what they're telling.
We, we developed those sound regulations based on their experience.
Yeah, I mean, I, so we're using their expertise in dealing with.
Right, and I, uh, I, I have to agree with the, I should know his name. Yeah, I agree, 55 decimals sound, it sounded out of line. I don't care what they get there, I just know that's part of. Living out in the country is listening to crickets, not on the train, so.
So if we were gonna put something kind of agreement in there about the agreement.
So we can do the same.
Where would we put that?
What section?
Yeah, it would be in the, uh, in the part where they say that instead of notifying everybody within seven feet miles or something, it would have to be, at that point, you'd have to say, have that sign agreements with everybody within.
Or would that go in the section four, the application, the required documents? Or get that in there?
I guess, my opinion is okay, so you get one person or five people to say, it'll cost you a hundred million dollars.
They're gonna have?
And it's, it's a lot of power that.
Well, these are landowner stuff, they're having, they, they should have some, so.
Well, the landowner should.
It's good not to give this amount of. Well, I mean, it's kinda, I, I'm thinking back, we lived along 75 Highway. And they came in and took some property. Now, granted, I would have liked to got a hundred million dollars, I can just throw it out as an example. But this is what you're gonna get, and if you don't like it, then you're gonna have to go to a committee, and then you'll have to take it to court. You see what I'm saying? I mean, there was a limit to what you were gonna get.
Was that in the domain?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, they opened that over your head.
Yes. But I'm just saying, you know, you get people that don't want it, and they say, okay, I'm going on, and so then this, this deal's done. I don't know, um, I mean, that's what I'm, that's what I'm asking.
But that's, that, that's something that I would think would be handled between the landowner and whoever the developer is.
Well, yeah, I understand, but.
I mean, these, the people that are participating have no problem signing up. So, you know, if, if they're providing them money to, to feel like it's feasible, then they should be, you know, and then.
I guess I would like to see a map of where actually the whole thing's going, and whose place it's gonna be on. Maybe that's something that's non-existent, I don't know. How, how many families are actually gonna be involved with where these families are gonna go?
Again, I'm trying to rate the regulations based on specifically.
Well, not necessarily, I just wanna see what we're talking about. I mean, are we only talking about two families? Are we talking about 20 families? Are we talking about 30 families? 30 houses?
If you take, uh, 1,500 acres and you say everybody within, where that is three miles, that's how many people it is in any given spot.
Good. But some of them are already getting money.
People that are participating.
Yes. So you'd have to take those out, so.
But they would always just sign off.
Yes, so that's what I'm saying. Okay, if there was 30 families and 20 of them were gonna get money, they would sign off, so we're only talking about 10 families, 10 houses?
Depends on where they choose.
Yeah.
They would, they would push it to a less populated area, there'd be less people to.
Deal with.
I mean, I, I fully understand what you're saying, and it puts a, you know, more of a burden to try to satisfy those non-participating.
Sure.
But, as Commissioner Kelly said the other night, he talked to somebody in Osage County that has a wind farm, and they get a check, they're a non-participant, and they get a check every month because the wind blows across their property. They signed, I mean, they negotiated with the company. Just because the wind blows, they get paid.
Really? So they're spreading the.
It's new home, it's a big deal. And it's. It, it's just a way for, for, to make, you know, hopefully try to stop somebody from being.
Coroner.
Yeah, and losing their property value, and losing their investment they've had, you know?
With the huge. Yeah.
But it, but it doesn't, outside of that radius, then there wouldn't be any, you know?
But it would, if the people don't have enough money to lease, it would have to be able to.
Or, you know, I give a little piece. It's really not a bad idea, man.
See, now.
You get a little Nextera, you get some money out of it as well.
Now, how do you put that into right?
It would be just something to where it'd be a requirement of the permit or the application, that they have signed agreements with every landowner within three miles of the project.
Center of it, or the edge?
That's what I would say, is the edge, any, uh, you know, anything that's within, and I'm, and I'm thinking three miles, because that's what is part of that project, and I was, because if there's a, they thought it may, may be noise or something, and so they went around everybody, made this agreement.
I think the missing is something like that, I mean, the wind tower might be different, it's gonna protect larger, but three miles from the perimeter is managed structure.
How far away are you gonna hear this? Maybe if you're out far enough that you're hearing your 55 decimals or whatever you're sending.
It would be more of a, it would be more property value thing, right, having to deal with the change of landscape.
Remember, you have to be armed in screening, physical screening.
Well, it's not so much this.
There's also some physical screening that involves, so it's, it's pretty much.
Sure, all, all those things would still apply.
Right, well, right, we're doing a lot to keep it from.
If you had 1,500 acres, you're looking at two, two and a half square miles, so then you're moving that out to a five and a half mile square block.
so then you're moving that out to a five and a half mile square block.
That'd be from the center or from the edge?
I mean, from the center. I mean, like you were talking in a radius.
Yeah.
But I just don't, I just, I don't know that.
Because it's a square, it's going to be in rectangles.
Depending on the property, right, it could be an eighty and, you know, it could be zigzagged all around.
Sure.
I don't, I mean, very few places have two thousand acres in one town.
Right, right, it's going to be spread out. Maybe it's, maybe it's two miles from the edge or something. It's not something we have to decide right now, it's just.
It's a conversation, yeah.
Right, yeah, it's a minute. Doesn't seem too bad that you've got to put that into terms.
Well, then, I guess. One of the things that I, I guess I had on my list, then, those people that receive that money will all be participating.
Well, we're not saying they're going to receive anything, we're saying that they are proven.
Well, what I, what I'm saying is, they should be a participant, therefore then they are covered under the insurance policy.
Well, they're not participating in landowners, they don't have it on their property.
I know, but, okay, so a storm goes through, panels get broke, they end up in glass, who cleans that up?
That was another thing I wrote down.
Yeah, if they were a participant, then it's got to be cleaned up by the company. See what I'm saying? No, I mean, if they got lump sum or whatever.
That could be further though than that. That could happen. Or any, anybody that's not a participant, this, this wouldn't, if I mind, that wouldn't, this agreement that they would have wouldn't turn them into a participant.
Good.
So the. Because you still have like the transmission side of things, that they have to have agreements for easements and stuff like that, that those people are not necessarily participants, but they are financially rewarded to allow those easements to maybe go to their property for the lines too.
Good. So then how would you, then they just have to clean up any?
Well, that's the thing, I, that would be something that maybe we need to talk to, there's insurance companies out there that cover these, these solar farms right now. I don't know if we have the ability to bring in outside people to, to kind of educate us on what that, some of those agreements are, that are standard within the industry or not.
That's what I'm saying, we need to get, talk to some people.
I think we have to have some language in there, no matter how far it goes.
Yeah.
I mean, if a tornado came in and took it ten miles, it needs to be, if there's evidence of that on, you know, whatever the perimeter is, that needs to go back to the planer.
How's it being taken care of then? Playing school or looking toward.
Right, yeah, playing devil's advocate here, I'm trying not to. I mean, if my house got torn up by a tornado, I'm not responsible for cleaning it up, no matter how far ago, as a landowner. I'm one who's starting to acknowledge responsible for cleaning up their animals.
If that happens, I could sue your insurance to get compensation for that.
If it does damage to your property?
Yeah. I mean, if your house blows over on the mine, the right thing to do would be to clean it up.
Absolutely.
Instead of making me, sticking me with your bet.
Yeah.
And if it was bad enough, then I could, I'd have opportunities to come back, I guess. In this case, a large corporation, they're going to look at me and, you can fight it all day long, they ain't got a lawyer. So that's where it needs to be in regulations.
Right.
So that'd be an insurance.
Well, yeah, you will have the insurance to cover it, please. It's still going to have to be done by business and insurance.
So I can find maybe a policy out there.
You're having a group there.
Well, if we find out a policy, there's got to be some wording in there, policies, we could use that to reference or something.
I guess I wanted to say one thing, I, I understand, you know, we probably don't have everything in there, but everyone, I haven't looked at that many, but every contractor I've looked at has not been as efficient with the project. Shawnee County is getting ready to pass theirs, there's just five pages.
They're going to edit to like two hundred and forty-eight.
Two hundred and forty-eight. But I understand, but still, they don't have all the things that we have, not even close.
And if we were, if we were to just go with limited scale, we wouldn't have to have near that, and that would be the two hundred or, we'd get two thousand, ten, ten forty acre project, or twenty acre projects.
So I, I mean, I feel like it was a right of action. Maybe we don't have everything in there that we need.
The other thing is, no matter what we put in here, it's a separate legal lawsuit. And there was something said about, if we put a condition in these regulations, any entity that files suit against Jackson County is disqualified from applying for permits. Because they can take, they can take any line out of this and sue us and get a chance, and we can't find it, we don't have a mind. So if you said, you'll all sue this, you know, before.
I probably heard a lawsuit.
Yeah, I was just going to, right, we're not lawyers.
But this one, it's not even a lawsuit, but that's how things happen, is you get their foot in the door and they start attacking. And if the regulations aren't clear from the beginning.
I saw a thing where you could, they could file a lawsuit instead of placing them along because they didn't pass. Didn't pass regulations, denied it, they found lawsuits and it was, you know, the county didn't have a right to not allow them to do it, so it's, which is a different name for every solar, a different LLC for every single, which, that might be something that we could build on and be like, you know, we ask for prior experience in the projects, it needs to be coming from the company that's, maybe we will, is it, because right now, if you're talking about, and they're coming in, yeah, they got a lot of projects, they got, like I said, Jeff Crusoe has got zero, you know, and why is that where you're being all that, all this, shell, you know, that's a limited liability situation to where they don't have liability, but.
So I guess my question, I mean, I want somebody else to run that. So can we bring somebody else in, like a lawyer that deals with this and say, here's what we got, what do we need to fix? I mean, because it's over our head, basically. We, I think we've done the best job we could, but.
I, I don't, I, I hear what you're saying, I, I don't, I don't think, I think we should bring some people in to talk about certain things that were brought up by the public, specifically infrastructure, what needs to, what do we need to service a project like this, as long-term, you know? Do we need to have water there?
Sure.
Do we need to have certain fire infrastructure there? And if we don't, then we can't put it there, or you have to pay to have that water brought or something, those are certain things that are outside of that. And the watershed thing, I'm not sure what that's about, I think we get some experts in here, we dive into these, I think, I think the things that they brought up, the highlights that they brought up, we need to chit chat.
Well, what, exactly, and address that.
I understand, but I guess, you know, even after we bring those people in, is this still going to be acceptable, or are we still setting ourselves up for a lawsuit down the road? I don't know. See what I'm saying? I mean, I would think that somebody who has a written contract for solar would have more knowledge than what we do, or at least be able to edit some of their operation. But whatever, I mean, I don't know if there's funds for that, or.
Would you have availability to hire, don't we, I mean, pay a lawyer?
Are there funds just sitting out there for that, and that would have to be something that I would have to, you know, talk to the commissioners about today?
Like the watershed.
Pulling from what fund essentially is what that would be, what that looks like.
I thought, I remember when we started, we talked about having Todd come, was, we'd have to pay him and we didn't want him sitting here while we're back and forth, but does that come from us or is that just from the county to pay somebody like that?
It's from the county somewhere.
Yeah.
Right.
We don't have a budget, basically.
Right. A lot of these studies that initially, when the framework was being done, is that any of the study would be paid for by whatever company, so the county wouldn't have to put that in, right?
Okay, well, that's a good, good way to look at it too, we could write it in there to where these studies need to be done. That's what you're saying, instead of figure out.
Well, that's, yeah, the studies that are listed in the regulations would be paid for, but not financing the.
Expert help would come from the county.
And I think that if we do that, we need to have specific questions rather than just saying, tell us what we need to do, because then at that point, what are we doing, what are we good for?
Right.
But these are serious landowners issues that we're handling around. And having to talk to a lawsuit attorney, we think that should be an irrelevant, we have to worry about, we're just worried about trying to write something intelligent, that isn't chumps, don't we, our landowner writes while trying to get everybody on board.
It's the people who sit on Mondays behind, behind everyone here.
And we have a, we have a duty to try to make money for Jackson County, the taxes, it's this big tax issue, so we need to try to resolve this issue and get this making taxed money. Is it that really are, while we're balancing the needs, balancing the needs while, and you were talking about other contracts, the big contracts that I've been involved in, you don't go out and inspect them, you have a performance, you say you're going to do this, you say you're going to make two megabites, well, we're going to start taxing you on one megabyte, what's your timeline, and it's more of a, you do what you said you're going to do, and how do we measure that, bringing it outside. Inspectors, if they install everything, like, they're going to want to install everything right so that they, they make their performance scores. Gigabytes, gigawatts to get taxed, or, yeah, we're spitballing.
Part of what you're, you're talking about might be the second, secondary agreement that the county did, talked about, working out with, no matter whatever companies, or if you have an old system, um, about, okay, what are they going to pay the county?
Right.
In those taxes or whatever, so that, that might be addressed in their areas, not the commissioners' areas, not really, if you're what you're talking about.
But I also, I have very little faith in just leaving it up to, they said they're going to do it for all of them. If we don't, if we don't have it.
Stand back and lie.
That's where you can.
I mean, that's, I've raised kids and if you don't have, set them, they're going to take advantage of you.
Exactly.
So.
I won't ask you, you might have answered, but you got to bring in the real kids.
The look on my face is.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, they're just so convoluted.
Just a little bit of a sidebar, just so we know about this scheme. This is, this project has machine rules, I mean, we're ten months every two weeks. There are other things in reference to zoning and planning that I'd like to address, not considering solar. I mean, some of the, some of that comprehensive plan is stacked up down here. We have to approve that every year, and there's things in there that I would like to have time to talk about, and it's very difficult when all we talk about is this. And we have two months left before we have to.
With the cycle things.
Yeah, and we're so tied up in this that it's hard to get the regular stuff done. And I don't want to miss that opportunity and have to wait another, you know, if we get to an annual meeting and we have to approve the comprehensive plan and we didn't have any time to discuss it, then we're pushing that a year down the road, and I think that there's things that we can do positively in the county within that comprehensive plan that we don't have time to talk about if all we ever talk about is this. So.
Sounds like you want to send this back to the commissioners.
No, what I really want to do is.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know whether it's, we actually go to the length of moratorium, but pushing this off until we get time to do the regulations. We bust our butts this year trying to get these done, and we get to this point and found out that we're nowhere close. And I want to make it clear that we're not going to allow anything to start until we're confident that this is, this is good, and we have other things that we need to talk about. So it, it's the point of, can we postpone this for a little bit to talk about the other stuff? I know, and I know the conversation's had about everything being refreshed in our mind, but we got a lot of things that we got to decide, you know, what lawyer to call him, what expert to call him. I don't want to not have regulations. I think that if this project fails because of whatever, five years down the road, there could be another one coming, and if we don't have the regulations, then they're going to say, okay, here we go again.
But in fact, that comes back to the commissioners, and they can ask for certain changes and present a smaller piece of this to us, you know, you need to really look at the decommission R.A. and fix that. We like this kind of language. I kind of agree with you. Okay.
I just don't, I don't think this is ready to send. I didn't, I didn't think they were ready to send before the public session. That's why I wanted to have them, was to get that out of the way, and we could learn how far we are off, and I think we did. But, and that was why I pushed to, to go ahead and, and fill our board back up so that we can continue with regular business of the county and this at the same time. But if we're doing this every two weeks, you know, we need to have a work session on a comprehensive plan, I think. Last year, we, I came on in December, didn't know anything about it. First meeting we had, we approved the comprehensive plan. I looked through it, I've had conversations with people, there's some things as far as, uh, Jackson County is a bedroom town. People live here, they work elsewhere. Our regulations somewhat stifle residential, and I think that we need to have better opportunities for people to have, some of that is in there.
So that's, that's due, that's due to be. So that's, that's due, that's due to be renewed by the end of the year? Is that the only way?
We have, we talked about the January meeting, but what we could do, obviously that's not just a, at least I don't think it's just a one meeting session.
Right.
I think that's a multiple. If that's what you're saying, I would agree, I would agree with that. What we could, one option that we could do in January is, is kind of set a schedule. Okay, we're gonna, we have this other topic that's on our plate that arrived first and we need to finish that up and then say in April, we can kind of set a tentative timeline. Okay, in a few months from now, we're gonna come back to the topic that we started in January.
What?
On plan.
What, but would that mean that no changes could be made to it until...
Until we actually talk about it.
Well, but could we approve it at any time? I'm saying that we, and we only approve, if we approve it in January for a year, can we...
Might be able to, but that's, that's, that rule is our own. It's not, that rule is not included on, it's by the county commissioner. I don't think so. So I think we have the right to move that deadline.
I think that we can amend that.
That's not what you want to do, though. Right? What you're saying, because to get that, that's important, too, to where we, we shift, work on that with the idea that it needs to be renewed in January. How much time do we need to go through that shift focus, right?
Right.
Because this is gonna take some time. But that's also a big concern.
I think, I think that we can move, move that deadline around to allow us to do both without overtime.
I think we continue, I mean, every two weeks for this.
Yeah, I have some thoughts on the conflict, too.
And the other part of that is, in their public comment sessions, several people stated it, in a meeting with the commissioners the other day, the company said, if the acres are capped at that level, it's a non-start. So if we, the commissioners have said they're not gonna vote for anything more than 2,000. We've kind of said, 2,000's our limit. That essentially takes the product, the pressure off of this project that gives us the time to actually write the regulations. That we can say, I mean, we can lock that in right now, 2,000 acres or 1,500 or whatever.
I would say 15 of it myself.
Does it mean that just...
The only, the only thing is, the 2,000 acres we have is the project area, not the project extent, so that's 70%. So that extends that out to 2,500 would have to be in those, that whole deal. So you could say 2,000 acres project extent, which will encompass the entire project.
We need to keep it at 2,000, whether it is.
That was the number that came into the thing. But we could cap it.
Where did the number come from?
It was in the original draft.
Which was a hodgepodge of...
But it's also what the commissioners wrote with the county attorney and they stuck to it. Mark wrote, stuck to it from the beginning, 2,000 acres is the number that I wanted, no If they, if, if a company can come in and need those parameters, then we can do business. But...
So, but, talk to me about the extent, what you're saying, is that a...
It's in the, part of it's in the definition.
2,000 acres, the deal of 2,500 acres.
On page three in the definitions, area and extent, 1213.
I don't understand.
And I was saying, if I still have the original, there was a drawing in one of the originals that explained that.
We need to also write in here something about, like, if there's any conflicts between one requirement to another requirement, that most suspended requirements shall be used. Because Del came in and say, well, you said here this, you said here this, you know?
Yeah. And that brings up another point that was brought up a couple times in the comment sessions and I've had a conversation with her, the shall. I know Dick was here and he said, shall is a thing, you know, shall is...
Yeah.
In, in current law, shall is not, is, can be shall. It should say must. So everywhere we went in to put shall, we need to change to must because shall can be challenged in court.
And the whole little color. And we just had, and we just had the county attorney go through, we're gonna run out of colors. But it's, that's what I'm saying, it's kind of just convoluted. In fact, I'm not even sure what's in it. Do I have the latest...
So I guess the question is, is do we, do we, uh...
Yeah, I could break down the rule.
Do we have a one-year moratorium on this under meetings? I mean, I don't know.
So what is a moratorium? Maybe I'm not wrong. Equal up the map.
Right, let's, let's finish one point forward.
Yeah, yeah, we need to fill this out.
So the project area is purple. But if you say it's the...
The extent would be the overlay district, right? Your Article 30, this is a bend-to-pay, so Article 30 is the extent of the project. That would be the overlay district. So something needs to be put in Article 30 about project extent. Is that to be, any of the projects?
Is that, is that accurate? So 4,000 miles would be 2,000, 5,000?
That's just a...
That's just a, this is enough.
Just a presentation.
It's not it.
Those don't fit the one.
Not just you. Well, I always forget about the 2,000 acres, that with 2,000 acres still in a...
Well, I mean, I mean, full section.
If there's any shake, it could be something, there's a gap and then something here and something there.
I mean, according to the map of what they have leased, it's zigzag. I mean, you know, they got one participant, they don't have a participant here, they got enough, you know? It's a checkerboard type thing.
I mean, this is, this is gonna take a while to get through, but just like this, we're just gonna have to go through it, right? I mean, it's, so do, but do we need a moratorium in order for the, because...
The only reason would be to give, or to, to set certain things in stone that...
Can we still work on these during that time?
Yeah.
There's no reason for a moratorium. I believe, kind of, this would be a legal question.
Right.
So right there. I don't think the company's gonna apply it when there are no land regulations that count or nothing for them to apply. Or they can't submit an application to the county until there are, some of the applications for them to submit, you know, plan.
Well, that, that would be a legal question.
And what can they sue us because we don't have a... But that's, the moratorium says we're gonna stop for a year and figure this out. And the only thing is that you may give that company an opportunity to say, maybe this isn't our fit, we can put our, move our resources elsewhere.
Just between us, though, I would, just because I'm a deadline-driven person, I would like to have in my mind when we could set a goal to say, okay, whether it's a year from now, we're sitting here in, in October, a year from now, we wanna get, we wanna be done, we don't have to meet it, you know, but, but taking, you know, saying where the power line is, you know?
I hope it was done much sooner than that.
And this is another thing I'm thinking about, Linda's, the first person go off and then you're gonna have another new person come on. So it's, it's gonna be a revolving door. Linda's...
I'm tired of...
I understand, but I mean, we're talking about bringing in three more new people. Okay, I think I go off.
Well, you can renew.
So, yeah. I don't think you're off. I know, I know.
We're not talking about that.
Did it say any...
That says somewhere.
Moving, moving on. Moving on to other thoughts we got on the...
But I guess I would like to shift gears a little bit to have some, some discussion about the comprehensive plan as well.
Well, we're December 26th.
You got a year now.
We're here in two months.
I got two months.
I'm sorry. But I know exactly what he means. I'm tired of talking about this. This is really, I feel like we're not really, well, I, I reckon on, two days of...
I think we're talking in circles, right? And so I think that there's hurdles that we have to get over, that we brought up, some real hurdles that we gotta get over and we're gonna have to figure out, we're gonna have to use, go outside of our, out of our circle here to, to get some of those answers, bring them back and say, this is possible, you know?
So is, is there, sorry, Chris, is there a possibility of a committee type thing? Like, if, if you say, or if we say we need, somebody needs to talk to a lawyer, gain information on this aspect. Are you willing to go talk to someone and bring that information back to us so that then we can make that intervention?
I think we should, have we signed that?
Yeah, so it's bringing each one of those people in for one of our work sessions, that's gonna be difficult. But...
Coordination, timelines.
Yeah. But if we said, okay, you know, so-and-so needs to gather this kind of information and we go out and get that and bring it back and we say yes or no, move forward.
That's what I was gonna suggest, why don't we write down a list of things that we want to pursue finding information on?
Or sign something.
Okay.
And that's about the only way we can do it. And it'll move faster, because you're gonna volunteer for all of them, right?
I'm just, yes.
You need another piece of paper to write?
I read them, I read it, I noted, I, I just feel like there's...
It feels like we go in a lot of circles.
Yeah, I'm not, right, I can't not.
We gotta make a decision and move on.
And even things that we've made decisions on and moved on, we come back to them and say, well, you know, we're still fighting for the, that change, what was accepted.
Sometimes I get our information that it's kind of, that someone has done some research and that helps us decide, okay, we wanna keep that or do we actually wanna change it with the new position?
Jonathan, you actually, you wanna bring something up?
Uh, not at the moment.
No, okay, yeah.
There's nothing you can change. I don't know, I don't think that is not a...
So you, I'm gonna start with the list that I had, infrastructure, roads and fire, like any type of utility, water, fire.
Do you have a person for this?
That's what I'm looking at. Now, I was talking to this valley, it's very close to a farm this, or a farm of the size that we're considering. It's been in operation, see the places? It's probably a team's call, you know?
And there's some of the stuff, you know, a lot of people brought up some really good points, but is some of those part of the commissioners' agreements that they, you know, in the, in the negotiations that they talk about, should some of that stuff fall back?
I believe it does.
That might fall back to the point, your point, that sometimes the rates go too far. Do we need to leave that up to the elected officials to, I mean, I, I don't wanna have weakened regulations, but some of that stuff is in the negotiation. I mean, whether we need, whether we need water up there, they got a 1/6 inch main offer.
See, the company's not gonna say they need water. But is it up to, is it beneficial for the county?
I think it's beneficial for the town.
Right.
To solar, and which would be the commissioners' job to negotiate that.
Well, it is all, and it is what, but if we, if we find out that it is beneficial to have so much pressure of water within so many miles of the facility like this, then we put that in there as a part of the application, as negotiation, but the commissioners aren't gonna know, you know, how many trucks should be there or if water should be there.
And that's a determination for somebody to say, maybe we need that much pressure for, if a, if a 3,000 gallon tank is 30 minutes away, then, enough, right? As Chris says, it takes a long time to get 3,000 gallons downriver.
So you think of, focus on, focus on one thing at a time, like, get, get the water issue, how big a pipe do we need to make sure is...
Isn't even necessary.
The solar panels in the facility itself isn't highly flammable. It's really addressing the grass fires because he can't let his truck ram shot over the solar panels.
There was also the session that says that if there's a fire inside the fence, fire department doesn't go in. If I turn it on, I'm fine.
Same thing? No, doesn't sound like a good idea.
We've got 40 mile an hour winds and the fire comes a half mile.
Oh, yeah. You gotta protect yourself.
At which case, there's, there's weed barrier, gravel on any of the entire project and there's no grass. And that eliminates the fire problem.
And I think we're doing our job, allowing that there. Everything in gravel, that's not a farm.
This isn't a farm.
No. Saying we're preserving.
Well, I know, but...
We're burying it in rock.
I think, yeah, these are designs that capture the sun. Nothing grows where there's no sun.
And there's plenty in between. That's where, if we were gonna do what a cell, try to make it, to reset limits, if there's distances between them, if there is grazing, grazing paths.
They're gonna look at as many panels as they can.
Like pack them next to each other?
So they're not gonna look at, and if they only have 2,000 acres, it's not feasible. So at that point...
We pass this on, think, try to patch this a little bit with the water and the water shed, pass it on to the commissioners. Like you said, I'm tired of passing over to them.
So Chris, I think you can, you can do some research on that.
What infrastructure need? Let's, let's, let's go for this.
Okay.
Because we talked about our water shafts.
Yeah, now, was that, was that basically about because of drainage or because of toxins? Was that because of...
The amount of, like, if that land is wide open, there are certain, there's certain torsion. You know, if we get a two-inch rain, parts of that ground is getting torsed and that water, some of it's gonna run off in the wash. In this particular project, it's in Cross Street Water, which runs to Rossdale. They have flooding concerns, things like that. That's why this specific project, not the regulations, but this specific project talks about Cross Street Water.
Isn't there a map in there?
Yeah, probably was.
Yeah, it's in there. But when you, it's like your roof.
Okay, so there's more runoff.
Yeah, so it's all going, it's concentrated. So on the roof, you have a gutter, dumps it into a bound spout. And what happens at the bottom of that bound spout is a lot of water coming out of it. So if you take all these panels and, and push all that water and there's no torsion of need... So if you take all these panels and, and push all that water and there's no absorption of me, it runs off, that creates the flooding issue.
But there will be absorption because the, it's not like a house where the ground is covered by, you know, a square foot building. Well, this, these are panels where the water will run down to the ground, which is still there.
Right. It's, it's concentrated.
It will still absorb water just like the river pool. I think most of the watershed district's problem is anything that gets changed in our area, it changes how fast the water gets to the watershed. The watersheds are not very deep, you can walk all the way across all the, not walk from this. They're not deep, they're just meant to catch a two-inch, a five-inch, a seven-inch rain. They're meant to catch it and release it slow enough that the creek doesn't go up and hit the river bridge and flood Ross Creek.
And the watershed district is the drain, is the boundary.
Who regulates the watersheds?
They have a committee aboard that, that kind of oversees the watershed. If somebody wants to remove trees, they're supposed to ask permission to remove those trees on the farm ground. Because every tree removed speeds up the water, how fast it gets to the ditch.
Like taking grass off, you know, converting it to subseal farm ground.
So that's a public entity that regulates that? So that's probably what we can talk about.
And it's also some, I think it was said in somewhere, the Corps of Engineers regulates all of the watersheds.
The Cross Creek one meets in Ross Creek once in a while, I've been to their meeting and stuff. Trying to get them to dry hydrate and stuff.
But the, the perimeter of the watershed is everything that drains to it. Like Banner Creek watershed is seven miles.
Yeah.
It's from the dam to the point of the watershed is seven miles and that's watering since then.
One thing that we could look at in those, regarding the watershed, is the section three. And this for a pool, and I'm not asking everyone to look this right now, but things like firms, other things that can help. As well, you know, still catch any, any excess runoff. So if there's a need, that might be meaningful to work on.
The what entity?
Once you get the research, each civil engineering, all that goes on, all the catch ponds, every parking lot has a catch pond built, designed, every.
Sure.
Every piece of ground that gets flat has that.
Sure, sure. But the actual watersheds are regulated by a public entity that needs to approve any type of.
They got a lot of money, they used to buy drains to build.
I mean, how deep do we need to go into that? I mean, we have a report from NRCS, the watershed district, concerning impact on water quality, soil erosion, drainage features. I mean, we have that listed, how in-depth it was, does it need to be?
Is that the, is that the company that, or that's the entity that regulates that?
Well, NRCS is the Natural Resources Conservation Service, that's the county, we have a county office.
And they regulate the watershed? Cause it, that's what I'm thinking is that, I, I'm not saying we need to write any regulation, I'm just saying while we're, while we're taking a step back and getting information. Do we need to contact the people who regulate these watersheds for certain impacts this or may have on the watershed? To educate ourselves, or I need to educate myself, whatever. You know what I mean? That, that's the only thing that I was thinking.
Maybe this, also we call, you know, under with some of the other water, so facilities are, and then call people in that county.
Cause that's just limited to county?
Well, that's, yes, so when someone applied for a permit, the conditional use permit that we have, we were requiring a report.
From the county?
From NRCS and that watershed district. So if they're in Soldier Creek watershed, that, that watershed district would have to give a report of those things. What's the other one? Delaware would be the whole eastern side of the county, drains into the Delaware, so.
Yeah, I mean, is that, I hear what you're saying, is that, is that capture? If that's gonna bring up, if there's issue, that's gonna bring it up right there.
The watershed, because in this project, they're gonna, they're gonna work with Cross Creek and they're gonna have to say, this is what's, what we need to see. So I, I don't know how deep we need to make that regulation, we have a report from the, that's required.
That the county commissioners would then enforce that?
Or, well, we would.
They would tell.
When, when they come back to us with a conditional use permit application, we would look at that report and then go.
We're gonna do their.
Does this have everything or does it not?
And then, and our recommendation, whatever it is, along with their application and all of their, their attaching documents, we're gonna, we're, and commissioners, that they have the capacity to.
So is that, is that question answered then, pretty much?
I think so.
I, I don't, yeah, I think that in some sense it satisfies, I don't think it satisfies everybody in the community, but I don't know how deep we need to go.
Does it say shall or must?
Yeah, there is, we should start the back and go through and treat different.
It does, toward this and the county planning commission, and any, any other county officer or employee shall consider the following in addressing any application. So.
Okay.
The shall must question could be answered officially by the county councilor, who would be responsible for anything, any problems.
And, you know, that didn't come from any, that was just a, a simple Google that is shall, consider legal terms, and it says, it used to be, but it made a challenge now, so. Yeah.
So I can cross the watershed?
Want to take it off the list for now?
Yeah.
Or do you want to just say what kind of input they have?
Yeah.
It's a monthly.
We need to verify that those are the people who would tell them they have to tile all their property if they break the grass. You know, do telling a farmer.
Well, that's NRCS, if you tear up grounds and you have to file a plan with them on soil erosion. So that's where, yeah, we say a report from NRCS that says we need to tear up the ground.
And swamp cleanup? Is that, is that something that I can reach out, I can do some research on that? See if I can get swamp cleanup. And I can write the wording on that, if you guys would be open to that, I can write the wording on the, the agreements with the radius.
Talk to the insurance guy.
Not like any insurance policy, there's, there's limits. You can call and ask for full coverage and then pick up, and they say, sure, and they give you a number and pay it, but when something happens. We were only covered.
Some of that, some of that, that probably would be covered in the decommissioning.
The outage isn't covered.
You know, if a tornado comes through and wipes it out, that money is supposed to be there for the decommissioning. Which that's supposed to be set aside for tearing it out at the end of the project, but tornado hits it, it's kind of.
Chris, you wanna cover, you wanna do the watershed again? Yeah, that's the watershed, because it's easy to ask. And when you say infrastructure needed, I mean, I could do, that's what I'm, I can do some of that.
Or maybe you're not sorry, but just, just to help you go.
Something that came up about roads was, which is in the, the commissioner's job to negotiate at the beginning. But say that they come back ten years later and wanna repower or, you know, redo this, so then they bring in heavy equipment again, but is there a requirement to fix the roads back at that?
That would seem to be possibly addressed. It, it might be a need for a, some sort of.
Right.
Clause or paragraph in there to just address that sort of.
Right. Most of what we did was very construction phase, and then they have to.
But if there's a reconstruction phase, now that should still apply.
Yeah. Yeah, if there's any, any type of construction, you should have asked the direction there, being stewards of the, of the facility.
I was working on that language for that exact thing several months ago.
And then what, what about the, the other thing that popped in my head, the, the zoning, some people brought that up. I don't know, that's kind of a big can of worms, isn't it? As far as rezoning, something like that?
Yeah, I can tell you my perspective on that. You can take that for what it's worth, but in the beginning, I, I originally was. Said we needed to change it to, to rezonate.
Rezoning.
Big discussions, okay. The reason for that, if that was all changed, if, if that entire two thousand acres was changed to industrial. Thirty years goes by, they tear the project out, that land is still industrial. We haven't, the county would have no control in that comprehensive plan of what can happen. There's very many, very few limitations that have been so industrial, with the conditional use permit. We can put conditions with these, this book of regulations that have to follow that. We, we could still get the, the valuation increase by, you know, change, taking it off of the use value up to market value with the conditional use. And was also the argument against the agricultural take, was because if it's a considered agricultural take, it could still be considered under the use value. And I don't believe that it's agr, that it's agriculture at that point, just because they want to raise sheep under it, the county would then lose the property tax increase. My thing is, is if the landowners wanna sign up for this, they should have a dog in the fight and pay higher property taxes because of it.
But we could tax them by the give or want, we could tax them to have a lot of performance to have.
All we've been really concerned with is property, property. And I hate property taxes as much as the next one, but. The reason for doing a project like this is tax revenue. And if we're gonna do it, I wanna get the most out of it that we can. So that's my reasoning for, I know I've had multiple conversations with people about that specific issue. That's my reasoning for sticking with the conditional, is it allows us to put conditions on the use of that.
We can't, but one of those conditions is we can't tax them by the want. But if it was industrial, rezoned industrial, then we could tax them by the.
The land is still taxed to the same, it's either use or market. If you have.
It doesn't limit us on our.
If you have a business, the county doesn't have any, your revenue doesn't, you don't, your, your tax is based on your revenue. Your tax is based on your property value. Am I right?
Yes, oh yeah, I know, and I'm trying to, why can't we address this? That's a stink.
Are you gonna go to a business in town or in anywhere and say, we're going to go after your revenue?
If they're not, they're not even. They're not even making electricity.
Can we let the, the.
You have to talk to state deals with the frings of all.
The appraisal side should be kept separate from what you guys are trying to do here. There is a hidden expense portion for commercial valuing, that could be an option, but you guys shouldn't be focusing on that. The, the side for the land valuing, the market versus use, that's okay. But you can't go in and say, we're gonna charge you by the megawatt. That's not a, that's not an option. Once this facility goes out of the ten-year exemption, then it's a personal property type valuation process, for solar and.
But then it would conceivably be worth more because it's on solar panels, I'm gonna better measure that.
It, it's gonna.
So at some point you have to, you have a praise and a value it.
Right. But the, the solar panels are gonna be different than the land value. There are methods and values that are different from the assuming.
So there's, so the fact that it's not permanent is a big reason why. It gives us the option to pull that anytime, cause it's a conditional use.
If, if someone doesn't, they don't follow these regulations, we can revoke that permit. If we change it to industrial.
It's industrial.
It's industrial. Make it both.
Yeah, I understand.
You bar factory or, you know, whatever, which.
I, I, I see what, I see what the reason is, I was just.
That's my reasoning, John.
I just know that it was brought up in those meetings and I was trying.
Right.
Is there any risk with that, that, that would be associated with what we're doing here? As far as the, the, the negatives part of that, is there any negative to that?
Keeping it conditional use?
Yeah. Is there any, is that any liability on any of the counties to go to, to do it as a separate?
So you're gonna do special use for a lot of stuff, for a lot of.
Right.
And it allows us to put conditions on it. Which is somewhat why we changed from special to conditional when we did it. Was it gave us more teeth, I guess, I don't get it.
What else do you guys wanna see on the list? I want to, I want to, I want to, I'm not sure that she was understood for her, she had any concern with that.
Well, I guess one on my head is water testing, that I thought we pretty much had. Water testing, water.
Somebody said something about testing wells and we have, it's been a quarter mile.
Was it done just once or was it done?
It was baseline.
Baseline.
A base, beginning, cause that was one of the comments that somebody said, well, what, how can we prove that? You know, that there was, that was where the contamination came from, well, we required baseline test. Now, that's only a quarter mile, depending on where they are in the watershed. If they're three miles down, you know, you can't control everything, but if somebody's three miles downstream and, and it's flooded, backs up and contaminates their well from something five miles away.
So can you look up what we had for water testing?
Yeah.
Not really.
That's all I remember is the baseline. Better remember, it's, I guess what I'm wondering for shooting.
See that?
He doesn't wait, he's searching.
Water analysis of that with the roads on page ten-nine. Deconditioning.
So it'd be a baseline and one thirty years down the road?
No, the, well, the baseline would kind of, if you came in two years down the road and said, my water's contaminated and I think it's from this. Well, if that baseline test said, yeah, your water was clean when we started, now it's not, it could be tied back to us.
But what they're, I think what I was hearing is they think they actually test.
But what they're, I think what I was hearing is they think they actually test them often and use the baseline. But the homeowner is gonna have to pay to test the well.
I don't know, I mean, I would think if you had a well, you'd give it testing yourself. You got a well, I guess. I don't rely on somebody else to test it for me.
The, the baseline was just approved.
Yeah.
If there's, if it's high in, I'm no scientist, but a specific thing, the baseline would say that you had that already or you got it later. But I don't know. I've read this thing so many times.
You go, you, you shall again.
Oh, it's on a little bit.
And we can shall provide general liability insurance for the entire scope of the project.
What are you looking for?
Their well, their initial.
She said twenty nine and said, you have your groundwater.
Yeah, I don't know, but I'm, I couldn't find it.
It says shall analyze the water in nearby wells. And optional water.
Right, or is either this section? Section three that they're, they're, I'm not ranked in front of it.
Yeah, probably put it up, basically put it up.
Go to section three. I'm not, yes, it's, it's tomorrow night. Yeah, that's.
I don't know, it's nowhere close to put it up.
Well, on my documents.
It's on my.
Groundwater.
What, you give me opinions?
Five, uh.
Five, four.
Hold on, that just says as well. I'll give you an option. What is it, D? I can't think of the right one.
But it shouldn't be under decommissioning because it's in the, it's in the beginning.
Groundwater testing, D. It's under section five construction, obviously inspection, order operator.
Section five.
Sure, I think there's some decommissioning.
I actually have it in a different place. I have it under.
Are we all looking at the same document? This is the one I have listed as our final one.
On mine, I have it under section five.
Now, as a one.
Yeah.
Groundwater testing. Within each of those, additional use permit, optional. Why does it say optional?
For one quarter mile, it says we offer by the operator prior to the installation. So they're saying that they need to offer, offer them a, a water analysis. It's not showing the all owners within a quarter mile.
I think we have, we just talked about it in another place. I don't think we ever went over that because this offer should have made the all owners of property within a quarter mile. I mean, we made a mandatory that they had to test every well within a quarter mile. That's not mandatory. That says optional.
All you gotta do is take out the word optional.
Right. The which then needs change for regardless.
Wonder if.
Do we need to change the conditions?
Quarter mile is something larger. It's not a very much. It's the entire county that runs down there.
Yeah, I have a problem with that.
One.
There it is, okay. It's under existing conditions. It's on page nineteen of my book. Four, in the application process. Number three, existing conditions, letter D, location and size of any known wells to the extent the same are available in other records or visible on surface of the property. Need a baseline reading from a group testing source, any KDS, within a quarter mile from the project area.
We just want to talk to them.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Page eighteen, I'm on, flipping out on nineteen to eighteen.
Yeah, so, so, uh, I've been dazed back and forth.
So there again, that's where you go back to, we have two different, it talks about it two different ways. It needs to.
It needs, yeah.
In the, in the, in the definitions of somewhere, it needs to say that it will revert to the most stringent required or whatever. Something.
Which is made both places the same.
Right.
When we have the soil, the soil samples, we check the soil at the beginning and when construction is complete. And then every time you're gonna review their application, you want to just add that to the water sample before.
Now, we got it here, I think. The baseline reading, right? It's up here, within a quarter mile.
That was to say, using the soil sampling as an example. We literally say, you're gonna check the soil at the beginning, when you're done. And then every time you, when you apply for your application, you're gonna prove your soils is good.
Or has it been changed?
So we could add that, so we could say that add that to water. Water sample.
Specifically refer to the water.
Yeah, it's in two spaces. She got that.
Page seventeen, page eighteen.
I don't get it, I'm not.
Of course, when Dick had a copy of it and it was printed in like, really small font, so he edited it like seven pages.
So if I'm moving second to change the distance on the well that's been from the front one quarter over to one mile and both locations. And that's a potential exception?
Do we also, well, we, there would need to include in that to change that one time to.
Change optional.
optional to. Mosh, chow, whatever. Do we do that after?
Uh, we can do, uh, should we just delete optional?
Yeah, that's what I always suggest.
That would be, might be, it's.
It seems like that could be the.
And I don't think that that's a contentious issue really, so we can finish this one, sorry.
It's complicated. Okay, all the way to the. High. When I make a motion to strike the option.
Second.
Or can we just, how do we just rewrite that?
Rising mode of the same.
Yeah, so. And just with each conditional use permit application, a baseline reading from a group testing source within one month from the target area is required.
If it does go into detail, I'd bet you about how to copy and certify that or this property, shall we qualify? It's all on the deep background for testing, that it kind of goes into that. Those all have to do with what testing should be right of the county's, not any administrative stuff, I certified now.
We can still track those out.
Yeah, I got you. So that would, that would read, with each approved conditional use permit, A, water analysis of active cells within one mile, change that to a mile, we did that in the side area, shall be offered by the operator prior to the installation.
Must be offered.
Yeah, we're gonna have to do a lot of that.
Hundred eighty-seven.
Yeah, hundred eighty-seven.
Yes.
And then also then after seven, seven mile, we need to change.
Yes, that.
Quarter mile to the one mile.
Yes.
Motion for a temporary to change the distance to one mile on regarding.
Well, just, yeah.
Regarding water testing, so here, the motion is still on the way to change, uh, in the water testing, page, uh, sections, changing the, this would be the word optional.
Yeah, we'll change the, change the word for that for me and today.
It's been a day. It's been a week, so.
We're just, we're kind of, we got a motion or four, we're just a, kind of, point of order that in the work section, we need to have a motion in the second, and I mean, if we just, you said, hey, I want to change this, let's vote on it, you know, who wants to, who wants it, he does. I mean, so maybe things that more.
With anyone of Jeff.
Yeah. Because we're, we take a lot of time doing some actual rules when, does anybody have a problem with this or?
I mean, I think, we have, some of the words are optional.
Yeah.
I would, sorry, whatever it needs to be.
So I was gonna, so switching gears just a little bit, so we've got, we've got these, so if we.
Uh, I mean.
Please remove, I should have a problem.
And that's.
Oh, is that what you?
If, if you say you want to change something and like, somebody says, oh, I don't agree, then we say, all right, let's vote on it. But otherwise, if you want to change something.
Right.
Easy, baby. You got all the try. I'm trying to.
On the chair and to leave.
Withdraw your motion.
I withdraw your motion.
As long as there's no mischange, I'll follow you and withdraw your second.
Okay, okay.
Does anyone have any problem?
All right. So do, do we talk about this, this thing you're talking about? Cause how we're gonna plan moving forward, how we walk away from this, walk into that, the comprehensive plan?
That's kind of where I don't believe, Jason, is if we get a list, everybody gets something to work on, we could take a break and go with the comprehensive plan. But that would be far away. But all I have for a list is infrastructure needs, water, fire suppression and security. Watershed district, what they would need for us to maybe put in the regs that we're gonna link up. And then storm plan, insurance as a company carrying out the county care.
You got that assigned to me?
I don't have any assignment.
You assigned to someone to me, I don't know. Anybody can work on anything.
We're gonna do swamps there, all right?
Yeah, I was gonna see if I could. Yeah.
I think I have one that I would like to do. And I kept hearing that all the time, what is the makeup of sort? Talk about TC, BLS and.
Like the difference between whether that a plastic or metal?
And that was one of the things that Ben brought up when he was here, that he was talking to a guy about what specific components we wanted to ban.
Right.
In those, I don't know what that was. I do know that they talked, when he was here the other day, they talked about not buying panels from China because that's the, China uses the, whatever component it is.
I guess.
And.
He's not buying from China, they're coming from China.
Yeah. So that's from Mexico. So as opposed to banning it from a certain place, if you ban the component.
Yeah, like a chem, like a, yeah.
Chemical component.
That's what I would, you know, I would like, what they're made of, tests we can do. I mean, I don't.
They're not gonna fall apart, they're not gonna fall apart. What's it take to break them down? So I think.
I, I'm also going to.
You're all up here around.
Drop the, the wording about the agreements with the, the neighborly agreements. See how they're gonna do it earlier and be done. And then try to find some wording on stringent, requiring this chow live, you know, like, so just.
We're similar to hot topics.
The other thing, certainly the roads and water's easy.
There were a lot of, a lot of things brought up. We're not gonna satisfy everybody.
Right, but we're gonna take, we'll take a shot, yeah.
But I, but I have to agree with the sound, the way we, we did.
I got my.
Yeah, I'm sorry, just.
Not for you.
I was gonna complain about the noise, fifty-five decibels. At your doors.
You think that's too high?
Too high.
I want you to take it out. We've already done that.
Yeah. So what we settled on and if we, we continue to revisit this, yeah.
We're not gonna get any.
This, this one guy handed us this, which I think I picked it up, but it's about best practices for decommissioning. Who it was.
And my question is, has there ever been one of these decommissions? So how do we, how does anybody know what it looks like to decommission one of them? I don't think.
That's why I'd like to talk to them, Tom, that's one of the questions I have. It's crazy.
But I know one, I really get a good brain up and I talked to some people about it and it's a letter of credit. They need to put a dollar amount on it. Well, I'm saying, not a letter of credit. But yeah, I've talked to him, said that's worthless.
And that was what Pete Delly asked the other day, he said, would you be tempted to put cash in the bank?
Yeah.
And they said, bro, cash real. They gave a.
No.
Roundabout answer about, oh, it's better to have a letter of credit than just cash in the bank. But I think that that's something commissioners would have to work in the back.
Just part of their financial agreement.
Yeah. I mean, if we have the regulation that talks about.
Yeah, that's all.
Well, I know, yeah.
Right.
Do you want to change the master.
I mean, that's really the county commission.
Well, I mean, we have it in.
Right. So, yeah, I mean, it's so great, they're a letter of credit to.
So this person said, uh, wrote up a thing about no storage of an operative damage or, obviously equipment should be allowed remaining in property. Band-aiding and comprehensive degree cleanup. Band-aiding and comprehensive degree cleanup. This is pretty deep here. Something else, it's a less than business.
And there's something else that kind of goes in about it, putting a regulation that in the, at the point that they decrease under a certain productive level, that they have to remove or whatever.
Right, so that's back where I was trying to find a way that we could make them show performance, like that they're not going to let them sit there.
Yeah, they could, they could say, as long as they're still producing a tenth of a kilowatt, they're saying their tail is still producing, we don't have to tear them out. Well, if it's below a certain percentage of their productive life, then they're, they're done, they have to. Because I don't think that decommissioning is ever going to happen.
No.
I don't think.
There will always be a reason and excuse.
Yeah. It'll always be under some type of construction, so the tax evasion is never going to, you know. They're always, there's always construction, so. There's loopholes, no doubt.
So what are the? A lot of people talking about the property value, having a good name. But it, like Jason's talking about, they have to make an agreement around that would probably solve this problem.
And there've been, the commissioners are talking about a, a fund or whatever, that. If it's determined that the property value is decreased by ten percent, then that needs to be offset with what, yeah, that program. What's the. And I think a lot of the summits that we heard were trying to find a way to make something tougher to eliminate the project, which. There's a lot of things I think that we need to look at too, but as far as making every one of those companies take place, that's.
Yeah.
Because we'll.
I mean, I'm looking at airports. Got a good point, a lot of good points about air, air strips. Have more studies and glitter and this and that, but how far are we?
Well, I, I'd speak to the airport thing, I think that the, the issue around that is, that maybe it's not the regulation, it's the fact that maybe that there's deals that are maybe not permitted for airport, right? Not recognized by the county's airport, but still a farmer, or they still use it as.
Private airstrip.
Private, right, is that, is that right, the way that I interpreted that?
I think you're not.
Yeah, because this says, within five miles of any military or commercial airport, says nothing about private airstrips. And that's what they were trying to get at, was.
That is reasonable. That concern may be moved. There is a proposal to, uh, everyone knows, knows that, uh, consider national airport covers. I think it was a hundred acres ground, around the airport covers, obviously thousands. There's a proposal to build the unused land out in the sort of. Obviously. What I was, what I was saying, not, obviously, we are not with the same airport authority. But if someone's being proposing that, then, then there are, there are ways to mitigate that. But it's not an airplane. And the city being an entertaining option. Most of this got private land, land.
Anyway, that's like, that's owner operated, so they put it into where it's feasible for the airport, this is the developer. I guess they're not participating in it, they're not going to.
Yeah. I mean, land is building themselves.
And as you said, they're going to be running on insurance, whereas a private guy flying a two-seater. If he's flying that and all of a sudden gets blinded by the sun, you know, that's a different story, but.
I think the vision was like.
Yeah.
So, so that needs to be, that even if it's a private airstrip, is it going to be considered? Is it permitted that way, would it need to be permitted that way for it to be recognized?
I know, I know, it's like fires, I try to put my drone out to get pictures of some of the fires back for training and just to have pictures for later. And there, there are several private airstrips in the gun. Like, there's several places I can't even turn the drone on. And you hit the fire button, it doesn't come on. And you look at the remote, it says, too close to an airstrip, not power on. It was a geofence around it.
So they're somewhat registered, they're somehow registered.
They must be, yeah, they must be.
Because that, that would be a caveat, I'm talking about, you know, somebody to walk on airstrip, not. I mean, we've got eighty acres of native ground, but back when they did a lot of crop dusting around, planes would land on it. It was smooth enough that they landed planes on airstrip. I mean, but I can come in and say, I love airstrip, you got it. I would say there has to be some registry that they would have to.
Sort of be acknowledged. Now it's there. I'd assume.
Probably one would need a special use permit. We have several, we have special use permits.
So the county knows where they're at. Okay.
Yeah. Especially if it comes up on your drone.
I'm really wondering, because it's like, dills, it says airstrip in place. Go two miles away, stick it up, and then you'll, and you fly separate. It's a geofence, it's a stop sign.
Wow. So we need to change that? Right? For the private, is that covered?
They're going. You could put it to where, uh, see where they are. Then we, maybe they don't have permission to use. Well, that's what I say, is if you put in there that approved through the county. That way they can just say, well, I've got one, what does the county know about it? Or you could just add any approved private airstrip.
Obviously, Kate could write a list, not today, it would, it might be one of the ones that she kind of knows about.
I mean, long, but look for loops. Talking about having to cover. Yeah, we don't have to look at them, we don't know where it's going to be.
Right, just say, military airstrip or commercial airport or airstrip, or privately permitted airstrip.
I said, you.
Huh?
You said, you said, Tony approved.
Or county approved or permitted, or however you say it.
How do you say it?
I would say, proper, properly permitted.
Properly permitted.
Whatever all instances.
You got it, you heard.
Sure. Do you need the word private in there, county approved private, or just county, I mean, any public or private is going to be county, yeah, definitely.
No, it sounds like a little distance even for a proctor's. Would you, you think any, make the exception, say, what, I can land within a quarter mile?
Well, I think it's, it's a layer. You're coming in, it's going to shine.
Yeah, they would.
See the glare of.
Probably won't last very long.
Okay, so the airport, this one.
Oh, I know there's one thing. It was just a clarification. Somebody, several times they commented about, why do we have, um, no two projects can be within two miles of each other? Why did that struck out? I can't remember where it struck out at, but the reason is, we only allow one project. There is no two miles apart, there's only one project on the stamp, so.
That's why it got struck out.
Yeah.
Because they clearly stated, they're careful, there's only one project.
Yeah. But we do need to add in, the word total is struck out. And. This is there in objection to just adding the word total back in.
Page, what, page?
Uh, page nine, section three, number four, size of systems on property, not letter A. Which by putting the word total back in would remove the remainder of that.
Section three.
Number four. A. I'm proposing.
Yeah, I think we should do that, if it says on this paragraph, we should change it to fifteen hundred.
I think it can be stated, I'm not so inclined.
I think we took total off because we had.
To be a company, it says one, it says more than one, two thousand acre site.
But then we say, unless we, for the commissioners, approves a modification.
Which goes without saying anyway. That's, you know, to say, which we always say.
Right, that's what, that's the loophole that someone could use to gain more access. And I, if we put total back in and remove everything after that, from unless down to property, and just one, two thousand, one acre site total. That's what the commissioners want, and that's what I think is acceptable.
Any sort of, anything beyond, should we still have to go through the county procedure? It could be this body and that body. So, so a no could still be good?
No, if they're at two thousand acres, that's it. There is no come before the Lord and ask for more.
Uh, you could look at this several different ways, you could say, okay, this regulation, it applies to one, two thousand acre solar. That's what it, it doesn't apply to anything other than, uh, solar front is two thousand acres. It doesn't say that there is a restriction countywide that says that they're only going to allow one. I mean, you could dig into those and say, well, this, you can't do, this, you can only, this, this only applies to one, two thousand acre. You can take this and then, okay, this applies to another two thousand acre here.
No, that's sort of saying that.
It's all how you read it though, right?
That's left open to interpretation.
Yeah.
What it's saying is that Jackson County will only allow one, two thousand acre project.
I don't have any problem with that. I'd go with fifteen hundred.
I don't know if we can go back, this might not be.
Yeah, we could.
It would be, uh, maybe we're going to go back to, and take a look at, uh, that for A, the original language that we've got. I, yes, and that, the way it's worded.
I think with the yellow that it.
It's very close.
And the total was taken out.
So that's taken into account.
So I guess there's opposition to removing that by further.
I don't know, I like, I'd, I'd take it out. Because you don't know what's going to happen after this is approved. Those three people, three new people get on and say, hey, I'm going to give you the three thousand.
Yeah.
The future is going to.
Because then that takes it away from them, and they can only do two thousand.
Correct.
I'm trying to guess what the commissioners.
I'm, I'm following, I'm following for votes on, I want to put, I want the language to read, one, two thousand acre site total period.
Take the rest of the paragraph out. Three.
I'm waiting on that.
That's good. Like, it's, that can be addressed in the future.
So I, unofficially, I see five votes to do that.
That would be five votes to one.
Can we, since we're on this, can we vote on the fifteen hundred?
It's, it's not going to take.
Doesn't seem like anybody has the appetite for that.
No, I don't give a two thousand.
Okay.
We don't necessarily agree that we should be limiting it to one, but under the commission can come back.
Later on, next year, if it's successful, go ahead.
Right at our, our scheduled time, um, we want to schedule, we, our next regular reading, of course, is the full agenda.